Call the meeting to order.
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Smith?
Flash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from April 8th, 2013, regular session. And I move we approve those minutes.
Second?
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Yes.
Under new business resolutions this evening, we have bill number 2013 dash 25, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign amendment number six to the agreement for professional services contract with Horner Schiffern for the design of the collection system rehabilitation. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. As you know, we've been working on the wastewater system. And as a part of that is the collection. And we've had issues with inflow and infiltration. And this project will deal with some of that. And to cover the details of what we're doing, I will turn to Kenzie Russell.
This would provide for the design work for the second major contract effort to seal manholes, slip line, pipe, and make some repairs in our collection system. We are basically using for this money that was line item budgeted this year, as well as some of the remaining bond funds since we've been able to do the phase two rehab work at the plant within budget. In fact, actually anticipated to come in a little under original budget because we've had some change orders that were deducts there. And so we're proposing to use those two sources of funds to put together roughly a $300,000 contract effort in the south or southeast watershed, the area that we have mapped, smoked, and TV'd that flows up through the seminary walnut area and the Garfield Park area where we had recent issues. And Horner and Schiffern will look at the data that was collected, analyze that, and try to give us the best bang for our buck with this effort. It's something that we hope will be an ongoing effort, perhaps not quite on this scale, but something that we can continue to attack and work on, on an annual basis, much as we do with our street maintenance. And so their contract, design contract for this is $32,500, does include assistance through the construction phase as well as the design phase. Questions?
I have a question, but I'm not sure if you'd be the right one to answer. But I'm, my only question with this thing, it's a great plan and all, but how did we do this without having a bid out? This is a new contract in every sense, except we're calling it something different.
This is an amendment to our contract for wastewater services that we have with Horner and Schiffern. The professional services are obtained through qualification-based system, which we did when we initiated the work in the wastewater system and chose Horner and Schiffern. They are best qualified since they have all of the investigation data that we have done to be able to analyze and put this together. And so we've done this as an amendment to their existing contract.
Wouldn't that data be available to anybody else? Didn't we sign an agreement with them last year that they were going to hold this and make it available for whoever?
The data would be available to anybody else. And we can certainly back up and go through the entire qualification-based selection process again for this contract, if that's the council's pleasure.
I don't know if that's really, I'm not really getting a clear answer then. I mean, why would this, how's this different, I guess, than a new contract? Because in your own statements here, in the beginning, it says, "An initial contract was completed in 2011-12."
An initial construction contract was completed for the slip lining and manhole work.
I'm just making sure that we are okay with our own purchasing policy book, because I'm not sure that this is 100 percent. And the guy that would be able to give me the 100 percent answer is not here tonight.
No, the process that we went through is appropriate through purchase and policy, because this is an amendment to the agreement that we've already had with them, and we've already went through the procurement process with them on this.
It is in a negotiated scope and negotiated basis with Horner and Schiffern. I did sit down with Roger as we were putting together budget numbers and looking at all of this back a week and a half ago or so, when we were putting the council information together.
I move for reading of bill number 2013 dash 25.
Second?
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Yes.
Williams?
Can I abstain? Is that? I don't think my question got answered, but I don't necessarily think this is a bad deal. I'm just...
The only reason to abstain would be for some kind of a financial or ownership-type interest, like you owned a home down in the area, or had some rental property down in the area, or you had a relative that was a member of the contract, people contracting with normally...
So my house is in the area? Can I abstain on that basis?
Yeah, if your house would receive an improvement based upon...
I don't know whether it would.
Proposed agreement, that would be appropriate. Does that answer your question? Normally, the law requires that a councilman cast a vote unless for a conflict of interest, be it financial or friendship, something like that, that it would be appropriate. That may not help you, but that's the answer.
Yes.
That was a yes.
Yeah.
Do you want to read it? Do you want me to read it?
Oh, I'll read. Bill number 2013 dash 25. Sorry. Resolution authorizing the city manager to sign amendment number six to the agreement for professional service contract with Horner and Schiffern for the design of the collection system rehabilitation. Whereas the proposed amendment number six to the agreement for professional service contract includes preparation of the bid, package, and assistance with the construction administration for the design of the collection system rehabilitation for amount not to exceed $32,500. Whereas the city has budgeted $175,000 for this project and is expected to have an additional $175,000 available in the bonds funds to assist in paying for the engineering and construction. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section one, the city manager is hereby authorized to sign the amendment number six to the agreement for professional services contract with Horner and Schiffern for the design of the collection system rehabilitation of the sanitary sewer collection system. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of bill number 2013 dash 25.
Second?
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The next resolution we have this evening is bill number 2013 dash 26, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a construction contract with Willis Brothers for the West Liberty Sanitary Sewer Project. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. We have had some issues with the West Liberty Sanitary Sewer Line. And through some discovery, we found some issues and need to do some repairs. And to cover the project details, again, we'll turn to Kenzie Russell.
This is a project that our engineering division and wastewater division have been working on together for probably the last six months. It's the sanitary sewer line that serves those homes on West Liberty from roughly the car wash at Moldrow and Liberty westward halfway up the block to Morris Street. That's the section that we're looking at. And at some time in the past, a, I'll call it a relief line was constructed, an eight-inch line was constructed on top of the existing six-inch line and tied into the existing manholes. The eight-inch line is in what I'll call poor to fair condition, and this project would slip line that. The six-inch line is in poor to terrible condition. In fact, when we TV'd it, you could actually see portions of the top of the six-inch line and dropped out. And you could see the bottom of the eight-inch line from the six with the video. Came to our attention because of a flooding, a back surcharge issue with one of the residents who is still attached to the six-inch line. And we discovered at that time that Missouri American had a water leak which was feeding into the sanitary sewer through some of this broken six-inch line and flooding the line. We worked with Missouri American, got that repaired and that mitigated. Since then, we have pretty much on a monthly basis been cleaning the six-inch line to try to keep it open. There are five houses still connected to the six-inch line. And so this project would slip line the eight-inch to make a good pipe line there, would relay the house laterals and connect them to the eight-inch so that we can fully and totally abandon the six, fill it with flowable fill so there's not a void underneath the eight-inch pipe. We did take bids on the project. We had a number of general sewer contractors pick up plans, seven or eight, as I recall. But we only had one bid, and that is a little bit unusual. We did evaluate the bid. We feel like the $38,572 that was bid is a fair price for the work, certainly considering the amount of maintenance effort going into maintaining this. If we can eliminate that cost, it helps offset the cost of the construction work here. Willis Brothers is out of Macon, Missouri. They have done sewer work here in Mexico previously and have a good reputation. And so we feel like this is a good bid from a good contractor. And even though it is a sole bid, we are recommending, again, after discussion with Roger and our purchase policy and all, that we go ahead and accept the bid and proceed with the construction.
Your Honor, if I may, I've got a couple of questions. Kenzie, something tells me that if there were seven of them and picked up the specifications on only one bid, there's something wrong here. What is it?
I think it's possibly the slip lining work. Most of the folks who picked up the bid do open-cut pipeline type of work. And to do the slip lining required getting a specialty subcontractor. And I think that's what stalled or held up the others there. They either could not get that or were unwilling to put the price that they got into their bid, felt that it would not be competitive. As it turns out, actually, with our estimate based on our previous work here in town, the slip lining cost as bid was a little less than what we had estimated, while the open-cut pipeline work turned out to be just a little bit more than we had estimated. It all kind of came out in the wash, but it was flip-flopped from what we anticipated to be.
Secondly, we paid somebody to put that pipe in, that eight-inch pipe over that six-inch, and it wasn't connected?
It is connected to the manholes, but they did not reconnect all of the house service laterals. They did some of them, but not all of them at the time.
Do we know when that was and who that was?
I have no idea. We did not find any records of it. I don't know if it was done in-house or under contract, how long ago it may have been. Have no idea.
It seems like somebody owes us some work.
We just did not find any record on it.
But it's been some time?
It's been some time back, yes. Both of them are clay pipelines, so I'm going to hazard a guess that it's pre-1975.
There ought to be a record somewhere, shouldn't there? Council met before 1975? I know that. Okay, thank you.
I move for reading of bill number 2013 dash 26.
Second?
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bill number 2013 dash 26, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a construction contract with Willis Brothers for the West Liberty Sanitary Sewer Project. Whereas bids made pursuant to the invitation to bid on the West Liberty Sanitary Sewer Project were opened on April 9, 2013, whereas staff determined that the bid of Willis Brothers from Jefferson City, Missouri, was the best bid submitted, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section one, the city manager is hereby authorized to sign a construction contract with Willis Brothers of Jefferson City, Missouri, for the West Liberty Sanitary Sewer Project on behalf of the city of Mexico. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of bill number 2013 dash 26. Second?
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Next resolution is bill number 2013 dash 27, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service contract with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated for park master planning services. And this is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. When we had asked the citizens for the sales tax for the parks, we'd indicated that as a part of that, we would inventory the park system based on its strengths and weaknesses and take a look at it, that we would create a plan on how best to spend that money and identify that, and most importantly, give them input on that. As a part of that, that's why we are moving forward and looking at the parks' master plan. It's what we had budgeted for, to look at that and to get that input and to cover the details of how we got where we are at. I will turn to Chad Schumaker.
Happy Earth Day. The resolution before you would authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated for park master planning services for the amount of $27,535. 2012-13 budget allows for $25,000. The overrun is being covered by another capital improvement item that has come in under budget, which would be the pool lift and stairs to meet ADA. Megan did a bang-up job of finding us some more cost-effective solutions on that project. And so it freed up a few thousand dollars, of which we want to use $2,500 here. As you know, we published a request for qualifications for this project, and we had eight firms that submitted. We chose to interview four of those. We wanted to make sure we had council input on that, so we had a councilman, Councilman Botts, sit in on that committee that evaluated those. After interviewing and tabulating those qualifications, the committee's number-one group that they thought had the best qualifications was Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated. And I will say, Schaefer, Klein, and Warren brought some special consultants to the table that they don't normally have on their staff to work with them, that really spoke to how well they planned to come assist us. One of those being a, what's the word, for a statistical survey company out of Kansas City that has just an absolutely excellent reputation countrywide, and probably has the largest database in the country by a twofold or threefold measure of how many communities that they have done this for. So they can give us some very valuable benchmarking out of the data that we're going to ask our citizens for. So, and I've got a list there of what this will do for us. Half of the money is going to be involved in the statistically valid survey that goes out to the community. That will not only be, that will not only be statistically valid across 11,000 people, it will also be statistically valid by the demographics of the community, and it will be geocoded so that every portion of the community has surveys returned. So to do this the right way, to really get a good cross-section of what people in the community want, is an expensive process. But we're hoping it will give us a vision, a view of this community that we haven't had previously to help us, you know, be smart as to how we use these funds. So, that said, staff recommends that the council proceed with the reading and passage of the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated. Jerry Johnson is here tonight. He's taking some light readings while he's here in town for another project he's working on for the city. So if you have any questions for me or Jerry, I'd be more than happy to try to get those answered.
Could you speak? I'm just going to say, I mean, people are already asking me just from this afternoon of why this is different than what we're doing with the comprehensive plan. And I, me and you know the difference, but I think it's important that you put that out there and, you know, people watch, and it gives us something to say as well.
Well, it does some specific things, Chris. I mean, one, it will give us a general overview of each park in the system as to strengths and weaknesses. Is that park contributing to the system or not? And that's one of the things that we heard while I was out doing all the dog and pony shows to educate people before the vote, was, you know, we need some of these pieces of property, we need to know if we really need them or not. And we promised people that we would look at that, and that's included here. As I spoke, the statistically valid citizen survey is going to give us a view into what citizens in this community want. And it will tell us by age, it will tell us by economic profile, it will tell us, you know, by all kinds of different factors, what people in this community want, so that we're not just getting the same request from the same people that have something they really want. We're going to find out from that average guy that lives down the street that maybe we don't normally hear from. And that's something that we desperately need to be able to spend these dollars and keep the people and the whole community happy when we do so. It's going to give us that comprehensive list from that statistical survey of what the community actually wants. Okay? We're going to get a list of things that they want out of this money, and then we're going to be able to look at that list and say, "Well, we can afford this right now. We can't afford this right now." And actually put together a five-year plan as to, you know, how to move forward. And I know that's something you've heard about, you've mentioned that to me, that people know what we're going to do. We need this information to be able to tell them that. The system mapping is not going to go as in-depth as we wanted to. You know, this is my first time through this. I've learned a lot from doing it, I'll guarantee you. And we'll probably come back to you next year with some additional requests in the next budget for some more mapping services. But this is going to get us some basic mapping as far as where the parks lie in the community and how our coverage areas are affected by where the parks are and aren't in the community, which will, as I said, the other data is going to be geocoded. We'll be able to lay that over. We'll know if people from Ron's neighborhood are using Lakeview, or if people from Ron's neighborhood are using Tlak when we're done with this, hopefully. And then, of course, you know, they're going to deliver us a hardbound, you know, copy that, you know, you guys will all get a chance to look at. And then you can, you know, ring my phone endlessly, and we can figure out, you know, what that means, because I'm going to need feedback from a lot of people when we get done with this, as to, you know, what do we want to bite off and what do we not want to bite off? So, is that fair? Is that answer?
Is it all going to be mail, then?
No, it'll be mail, email, phone, and web survey. And what these guys do, Laser Vision, is really truly the best at this in the country. And they will go in and they'll develop the questions with us, and they'll send out the mail survey. And then if they get back, say, 250 survey returns from your neighborhood, and there's nothing from Greg's neighborhood, they will actually get on the phone and get email list, and they will contact people in that other neighborhood and in that other demographic until they have enough responses that it meets the demographic of the community itself. So if there are 50 people, you know, 50 percent of people are just like Greg, and 50 percent of people just like you, 50 percent of the surveys should be in your demographic and 50 percent in his demographic when we're done. So that's the kind of detail we've just never had before.
If we approve this, when do you anticipate we would get results?
I think probably two and a half, three months on the survey.
The survey would be, we said six months for those...
And then, and then six months to the final report. Once we get the survey complete, there's a whole lot of work for us to do after that with myself and the Schaefer, Klein, and Warren staff. So, you know, hopefully, we're hoping that we can get some of the survey information in time to help us in the budgeting process, at least for this year. There'll be some gross information there we can use. And then by the end of the year, when we have the whole report, during the next year, we'll start working on that five-year plan as to exactly what we're going to do. And by then, we'll have enough quarters of returns in that we'll have a better idea of exactly how many dollars are going to be available. Right now, we have one quarter, and it's, you know, we don't know a lot yet, Chris.
Your Honor, if there are no further questions? Oh, do you have a question?
No, I was going to move for reading of bill number 2013 dash 27.
Second?
Miller?
Yes.
Bott?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bill number 2013 dash 27, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service contract with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated for park planning services. Whereas there's a need to evaluate parks, survey the citizenry, and provide planning tools for the efficient development of capital, and whereas a request for qualifications, RFQ, was published in the Mexico Ledger on January 18th, 2013, with eight firms submitting qualifications, and whereas staff has evaluated qualifications and experience of Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated, and has determined them to be the best qualified to accomplish the intended work, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Mexico, Mexico, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the city manager is hereby authorized to sign on behalf of the city of Mexico, planning services contract with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren Incorporated for park planning services. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. Your Honor, I move for passage of bill number 2013 dash 27.
Second?
Miller?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The next item is bill number 2013 dash 28, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a use agreement with Presser Performing Arts Center for the use of Presser Hall. Reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, this is our annual contract with Presser for our dates of, that we use the facility. And again, to cover the details, I will turn to Chad Schumaker.
Hey, Bruce? The attached resolution would authorize the city manager to sign a use agreement between the city of Mexico and Presser Performing Arts Center for the use of Presser Hall. By allowing the city use of Presser Hall for programs and activities, the Mexico community will benefit in addition to maximizing the use of this building. The contract period for use of the building would be from May 1st, 2013, to April 30th, 2014, for an amount of $10,000 for a maximum rental of 60 days during the contract period. Any use of the facility by the city for more than 60 days will be an additional $300 for each additional day. Staff recommends that council proceed with reading and passage of the attached resolution. And I would note that we've already begun discussions with Presser and the IMAC Community Theater as to how to improve this model. I know that we've had some questions staff-wise, and I know the council has had some questions as to how we have this set up, if it's really the... as to how we have this set up, if it's really the best way to do it. So, we have initiated that discussion and there's been some fruit, but it's, you know, a fairly complicated process when we have two not-for-profits involved in trying to make a change, so. Questions?
How many plays did we put on last year, the city? Or, I mean, guess what?
Three in the Christmas play.
Four?
Yeah.
Three.
The Christmas plays really doesn't come under this agreement. Those days are, because Presser's involved in putting that on, so. And, you know, frankly, when, and I think you brought it up last year when we were talking about this, it was you, Greg, one of you guys brought it up, you know, the, you know the number of days. And we really started looking at it then, we've been talking ever since and this model was kind of derived to help Presser fill up the building. And that funding model of support really probably isn't very valid at this point and so we're trying to come up with a, a different support model that helps us achieve the same things as far as the city's goals of supporting arts and making sure community theater continues in the community, but maybe we do it more efficiently because gates are improving. This was done more than 10 years ago before I started here with the idea that we needed to build audience for these things in the community as one of the venues for having entertainment in the community and it's achieved a lot of that, so maybe now it's time to look at the model and, and everybody's amenable to looking at the model, but it, it's getting a little complicated as we try to pick it apart and put it back together.
Who gets the receipts for the plays?
We do.
So how did we fare?
Off of the one we just did, we netted about $3,750 and I think our royalties were around, I want to say, $1,250 or $1,350 plus some, you know, so honestly, in the one we just did, we made money. You don't always make money. You know, it depends on how expensive the royalties are and how much set design there is and if there's cost to make costs and, you know, we try to budget it at the end of the year so that we break even, you know, that's a wash. Frankly, some of those monies could probably help community theater advance in the community if we came up with a model where they can keep some of that. And that's one of the things we've been talking about, but, you know, we're not far enough along in the process to really give you anything concrete yet. It's mostly a lot of ideas being thrown around and being shut down and tried, you know, tried out, you know, verbally and we're making some progress. I think by this time next year, we'll, we'll have something new for you, I hope.
I almost feel, it's almost like you're picking sides. You know, it's almost like, are you, are you supporting Presser, are you supporting community arts and it's like, I don't have a problem giving either one of them the $10,000, but it's...
Right, and the difficulty is coming up with a formula that protects everybody's interests and makes sure everybody stays whole through the process because we've developed kind of a funding process around this and so we need to develop a new one that keeps everybody's current interest whole. It's, it's a little difficult, but we'll get it done. Give us some time, we'll get it figured out.
Thank you. I move for passage of Bill number 2013-28.
Better read it first.
I move for first reading, move for reading of Bill number 2013-28.
Second.
Miller.
Yes.
Botsch.
Upstain, I'm a board member of Presser Performing Arts Center.
Yes. Bill number 2013-28, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a use agreement with Presser Performing Arts Center for the use of Presser Hall, whereas the Presser Performing Arts Center has renovated the Presser Hall building and would like to maximize its full use and benefit the citizens of this community and whereas there is a need to have a facility hold programs and activities. And whereas the attached use of Presser Performing Arts Center agreement would allow the city to use Presser Hall for up to 60 days from May 1, 2013, to April 30, 2014, for the amount of $10,000, now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section one, that the city manager be authorized to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Mexico with the Presser Performing Arts Center for the use of Presser Hall. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of this passage. I move for passage of Bill number 2013-28.
Second.
Miller.
Yes.
Botsch. Yes.
Yes.
Upstain.
Yes.
Under new business this evening, ordinances, we have one, Bill number 2013-29, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the City of Mexico, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding project 13-038A-1, Airport Improvement Program. This is up for two readings by title only and passage, Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. The city did apply and receive a sub-grant under the Federal Airport, Airway, Safety and Capacity Expansion Act. This ordinance would authorize myself to execute the contract with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to receive these funds. The federal funds were awarded to us in the amount of $16,055 for the design, for engineering services to do the design and the bidding for a cracked ceiling and seal coat portions of runway 1836 and then to re-mark the entire airfield. These funds will represent 95% of the project costs. The city will be responsible for 5% of the costs and if the project, if we use all the available funds, our total maximum not to exceed would be $845. We did plan and budget for this in, in this fiscal year and the, we would recommend that the council proceed with the two readings by title only and passage of the attached ordinance authorizing the contract with the Missouri Highway Transportation Commission.
I move for first reading of Bill number 2013-29 by title only.
Second.
Miller.
Yes.
Botsch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Bill number 2013-29, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the City of Mexico, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding project 13-038A-1, Airport Improvement Program. I move for second reading of Bill number 2013-29.
Second.
Miller.
Yes.
Botsch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Bill number 2013-29, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the City of Mexico, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding project 13-038A-1, Airport Improvement Program. I move for passage of Bill number 2013-29.
Second.
Miller.
Yes.
Botsch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Next, we have, under other business, the claims. Do we have any questions on the claims?
Move we pay the bills.
Second.
Yes.
Botsch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Next, under comments, we have council comments. Councilman Botsch.
Well, I want to commend all those who worked on the cleanup and green-up project. It's, it's so exciting to see that we had 37 groups and 185 individuals and I want to personally thank you, Ralph, for sponsoring and helping. But the whole idea of involving the community and betterment is just so important, I think, and I think we can utilize their help in a lot of ways that gives them an opportunity to buy into this community and take pride in it and I just think that is a, that is a wonderful project. And I'd like to congratulate Little Leonardo for achieving the title of deacon through a lot of study, deacon in the Catholic Church. Congratulations.
I'd like to echo Councilman Botsch's comments about Earth Day, it's a great thing to get the community involved, not Earth Day, the cleanup. And you really need people to buy in, that's one of the things with the comprehensive plan, I've really been trying to get people involved because if you don't have buy-in, you don't have anything. You can have the best plans in the world, but if 90% of the community thinks you're idiots, well, you're not going to make anywhere, you're not going to get anywhere. And second of all, now Earth Day, I was at the, I was five minutes late to the public workshop there, but that's because of your birds. Took my son down there to see the birds, it's a wonderful event, I appreciate the city for sponsoring that and the Parks Department, thanks.
I had the opportunity last Saturday morning to attend the volunteer appreciation breakfast down at the Senior Nutrition Center. That was a good opportunity to have breakfast, first of all, and visit with the folks there and see the facilities, if you haven't been there recently, it's really nice. It was a great breakfast, I really enjoyed it and it was a really good time. With summer approaching, the, one of the most often complaints that I hear, and I probably suspect some of you do, is the loud music from cars. It's already started, I think, on some of our good days, so it might be good to do a reminder to folks, you can't do that and, and I'm sure Chief Rocket will have the officers so admised to write a few tickets. Distracted drivers is a concern to me also and it's a common complaint that I get. Basically, the complaint generally centers around people talking on cellphones while they're driving. I'm wondering if we could, or if maybe if we do capture that information in accident reports where there's a cellphone involved, do you know right offhand?
I think they've added that, yet other than just the general...
Yeah, inattention, I think, is what it used to be. I'm also kind of wondering what other similar-sized cities are doing about people driving with cellphones. I've heard both ways, that there are cities that don't allow it, there are, there are city ordinances for it and so forth and I, I think it would be good for us to have that information. Because I, I think it's just something we kind of tip to around, nobody wants to be the bad guy, but I'll do it because I'm the bad guy. I'm used to it for 30 years, but I think it's something that we, we probably need to give some thought to before somebody gets seriously hurt. And the last thing, I've received a couple of complaints about parking across the new sidewalks on North Kentucky, people pulling into driveways and blocking the sidewalks, folks are having to go out. That kind of defeats the purpose of putting the new sidewalk on Kentucky, it seems to me. Is that something we can check on and see if we're having a problem with and maybe... Yeah, I just heard about it very recently also. So, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Bruce?
Yes, I want to remind everyone, tomorrow evening, the comp plan update, next round, from 6:00 to 8:30 at the 4H Center, there will be a presentation at 6:15 and then kind of an open gallery after that as far as being able to see what they've worked on so far. So, again, your input is really important on that and we hope that you show up and give some valuable, valuable thoughts. I know we've had a lot come through, through the InVision Mexico site and that's, that's been very good. This Friday afternoon mainly, we will be, the city will be switching phone and internet services over, from basically a phone service to a cable service through charter and there will potentially be some interruptions and at times maybe unavailable to use phone or get phone or even internet service, especially email in that afternoon this Friday. So, just wanted everyone to know that that was out there. I think I've already indicated that through a council brief to you, but I wanted to remind everyone that this Friday afternoon, there could be some issues with, with phone and emails.
That does not include the 911 service.
No, it does not include 911.
I will ditto what Councilman Botsch and Councilman Williams said about cleanup day, very important for our community, cleanup and green-up, I guess it is called, so both are important, so. We're ready for public comments, I know we have one person here who would like to make some comments, would you get up and come to the microphone and state your name and address and go right ahead then?
Okay, my name is Earl Bennett and I live at 1027 Michigan Street here in Mexico. My problem is that the next-door neighbor's son, approximately 30 years old, don't know his name, parks either one of his vehicles in front of my house for the last 20 months, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Okay? My history on this is that this started shortly thereafter I moved here in August 1st of 2011. My neighbor's, first of all, my neighbor is Bernita Thien and one of her grand, our pair of her grandchildren, girls, were probably going to Mexico High School, I don't know for sure, but that's the way they were dressed, started parking their van in front of my house. Okay? So I go out and it's a bright idea of taking my finger and writing dirt in the back of their van window, not to park it in front of my house anymore. I found out this was a bad idea. And so therefore, her, their mother, not Bernita, one of Bernita's daughters, let me know pretty quick that they could park anywhere they wanted to, that it was a public street. So I called the public safety and found out this was definitely true. So, I went over and tried to ask nice and that didn't work, but shortly thereafter, the girl started parking across the street and it wasn't a problem to me anymore. And I thought the problem was solved. Shortly thereafter, the, her son, the one that's about 30 years old, started parking one of his vehicles in front of my house. I again went over, tried to be nice, begged, pleaded, nothing happened. And up until April 1st of 2013, I only had one vehicle and I parked it in my driveway and this was a pain, but it, it wasn't out of hand. On April 4th, I parked my second vehicle in front of my house and at, I'm going to say approximately 7:30 or 8 o'clock at night, I left to get my wife from church and come back and his vehicle was parked dead center in the front of my house. I went next door, knocked on the door, asked what the problem was. He said I parked too close to his vehicle and that he would park anywhere he wanted to because it was a public street. And I said, okay. And quite frankly, I've never been this mad in my entire life, but that's the way it worked. And let's see, on April 10th of this year, my wife went next door and begged and pleaded with him to move his car out of the front of my, of our house so we could park ours He said he would as long as I never parked back in, that close to his car again, otherwise he'd move it right back in the same spot again. Okay? I got ahold of a retired policeman and said, surely there's something that can be done, this, this just ain't right. He told me I was out of luck. On, the car is still parked there, hasn't moved since April 10th. Now, I do have room to park my car, but I'm scared if I get close to him again, he's going to back it right square in the middle of my house and I won't have a place to park. The curb frontage in front of my house is approximately 45 feet, the curb frontage in front of Bernita's house, where he lives, is 51 feet approximately. There's never a car parked there, so I don't know why he doesn't move just 20 feet forward and he'd be in front of his own house instead of mine. They obviously know the law and are taking advantage of it and what I'm asking the city council to do is let me make the front of my house a handicap parking spot. My wife has MS and she can park in front of any other business in town, why we can't park in front of our own house bothers the crap out of me. Now, I'll gladly pay for the paint, I'll pay for the sign, but I would really like for you all to take this under consideration because you're the only ones that can fix it. Thank you.
I have it in writing if you all would like to look it over.
We would, yeah.
Would you give that to the city manager, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, we'll investigate that and get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other comments? Ralph?
Ralph Meeke, three twenty-eight, Lake Road. I'd like to bring up an issue that I think, I don't know what the solution is, a lot of different facets to the problem. And it's been going on now for, this will be the fourth year. I'm assuming that most people, I know several, I see several of you, go out to McDonald's, you know, for a hamburger, cup of coffee, whatever. And when you go to McDonald's, you have a little bit of difficulty getting in there, missing the potholes. I see, I'm smiling. Okay. Now, I realize there's a lot of facets to this, and I have talked to some of the city personnel, Kenzie, and Kenzie was kind enough to call Will Walters Associates, I think is what it is.
Management Company.
Management Company. I don't quite know what the conversation was, and I don't know what was resolved from it, but it's kind of a unique situation, because the company doesn't have a business here. They, they don't, they don't own any buildings and service any clients or anything, they just own the land, lease the land. The entrance is probably one of the most busiest entrances that there is in City of Mexico, I think, anyway, and it services several businesses, both at the strip mall as well as McDonald's. And every year, about the middle of January, when it starts to freeze and thaw, and you can tell in September where it's going to be at, we start getting asphalt broke up. By the end of February, there's potholes, two or three or four or more, oh, four inches, five inches deep. Next month, they're about nine inches, ten inches deep, and they've been that way now for a month and a half. And it, it, it appears that these few little potholes, some of them not so little, have brought to a total standstill, in knowing what to do with them, a billion-dollar company like McDonald's and a million-dollar company like the management company. They have a lot of property around Missouri, all in states of repair and disrepair, as well as all the other businesses, as well as the city. Now, I've talked to the city, and of course, there are no ordinances for commercial property. Most cities probably wouldn't have to have ordinances for commercial property, because most commercial property is owned by the businesses themselves, and they tend to keep their business up, because it's not good for business if they don't. But that's, so this is sort of a unique situation, I think. I talked to Walters Company, too. Now, the lady that manages the, the maintenance of the company, I didn't talk to her this year, I talked to her last year, she, she's very frank about the fact that, well, they got a lot of property, they got a lot of stuff to do. She doesn't say they're short on money, but she indicates that funds are scarce, and they'll kind of get to it if and when they think it's necessary and they want to. The gentleman I got ahold of this time, real nice fellow, young fellow, sounded young anyway, they were aware of the problem, said that, well, they, they weren't really able to get any asphalt yet, they weren't making it. That's, not correct, but it was close enough that it could have been, you know, correct. But he didn't know what the timetable was, but he was sure that sometime this year they would maybe get around to it. He didn't say what getting around to it meant, so I have no idea. Now, the problem with this, in my opinion, is that everybody in town, other than a very few, think it's a city street. We know it's not a city street, but they think it is a city street, and it looks like a city street. It's at least a city entrance. Well, I don't know if a city entrance, what you call it, you know what I mean, a DOT entrance, I have no idea. And the, the citizens constantly complain about this, and I mean constantly. I'll refer you to Mr. Williams, he has fielded probably more complaints and knows more about the complaints than anybody does. But I just want to give you just one illustration, and then I, I think that if we don't have an ordinance for commercial property, we might, in this situation, maybe need one. I notice we just got done with an ordinance for, well, it's not a commercial airport, but then it's a, a commercial enterprise of some kind, city or whatever. I don't think the citizens expect the city to take care of it free of charge, but I think they, think they need to have a way that they can bill them, you know, and it needs to be done in a more timely manner. Saturday about three-thirty in the afternoon, I was sitting in McDonald's having a cup of hot tea, and this brand-new Toyota van come flipping in there, wasn't familiar with the situation, and hit that one pothole to the north and to the west and stopped. And when his van had got done rocking back and forth, he eased out of it and finally eased into the parking spot, and a gentleman locked, oh, fifty, fifty-five years old, his wife, and he got out, and he looked at his van, and he walked around it, she walked around the other side, and they finally decided that they couldn't see any damage, although I'm sure he was going to have to have his friend in line, but anyway. And so, as they were walking in, they were talking about this, see. They walk up, he gets an ice cream cone, a cup of coffee, she gets a hot fudge sandwich, and they come over and sit down, about two seats away from me. And I looked over at the van, and it had an Iowa license plate on it, and I said, which, you know, piqued my interest, I said, you from Iowa? Yeah, I'm from Atoma. Well, I said, oh, I said, well, I lived twenty-five miles away for several years, and they got talking about the Atoma Air Force Base, and President Nixon being there when he was a young man stationed, and the community college there now, and Morel's and all this, that, and everything. But anyway, he said, boy, he said, that's, he said, that, those potholes and that interest, he said, man, he said, that's, that's, that's something, you know? The other gentleman sitting, no, down about a seat away, seat and a half away, there's benches there, we probably, I won't mention his name, probably all know him, and he's been around for years. He looked up, says, yeah, well, he says, you know, he says, that's pretty good for government work. And that's all he said, see. My point being that the public, rightly or wrongly, has an expectation of the city, I don't know, anticipating being in front of the curve or whatever, to look at these things and maybe get them fixed. Now, are you going to do that? I don't know. My thought is perhaps our city attorney, I mean, I've got inflated a view of what a phone call from attorney would do, but the city attorney might be able to get ahold of this attorney for, what is it, the management company? I'm sure they got one somewhere. But I do think it's something that we need to look at, and I think it's really unfair for the city staff to feel the opinion, I guess you want to say, of the public, rightly or wrongly, that it's their responsibility to do something about something that they really can't do much about. Now, that's just my opinion, and my opinion and forty-two cents will buy you a senior cup of coffee at McDonald's, just don't hit the pothole.
Thank you. I'm going to, can I add on to this for a second? An ordinance to deal with this isn't unheard of. I actually called around today. We don't particularly have one, but it's not unheard of either, because in some communities you have commercial property that gets abandoned. You know, going to St. Louis or anywhere around there, you have lots of abandoned property, and they have to deal with these issues. We, to echo what Ralph said, you would think most commercial property owners would take care of their property, but in this case, we have somebody owns commercial property that has no interest in taking care of it, and you don't usually deal with that in a small community, you deal with it in big communities. It is, it is a sore for the city, whether we like it or whether we don't like it. Almost, I would say, I get, almost constantly, the first complaint I get, because they all know I sit on the city council, is, are you going to get the damn city to fix these potholes? And I have to say, it's not the city's. But then the same people will come in in two weeks and say, are you going to get the city? Because it looks like a city street, because it doesn't really go to a building, per se. And you not only get those comments from the people that live here, but let's think about the people who are visiting our community. If our own people think it's a city street, they think it's a city street for sure. We're working on our end to try and get a deal done, because it's, there's an easement issue, but, you know, when you get legal stuff involved, this could take forever. We have ordinances on the books that you can't have your grass eight inches tall, and that doesn't hurt anybody. It may not be pretty to look at, but it doesn't actually do any damage or anything. But this is, actually does damage to people's vehicles, it's getting that bad. And so, we as a city, in to echo Ralph, I mean, we've gone through this, this is four years now with these people. I don't see why there isn't any, is, I don't see any reason we can't say, well, you know, here you get thirty days or whatever to fix it, and if not, we'll come fill it in and we'll send you a bill. Something y'all can look into, I don't know, but it is, unfortunately, whether we like it or not, it is a problem for the city, because we get the blame for it, rightly or wrongly. And we would gladly go fix it tomorrow, but it's not our property, and so if we go messing with their property, that's a whole nother issue in itself. We can't just go tearing up their property or digging it up or what have you. We could secretly do it, I guess, but that doesn't solve the problem, that solves an immediate problem, but doesn't solve the problem as a whole. Somebody mentioned, maybe health hazard, I don't know, where somebody else could come in and deal with it, but it is something I think we need to take seriously rather than just look at and go, well, it's not our fault, because it may not be factual, but in the eyes of the community and people visiting our community, it is our fault. That's all I have to say.
McDonald's can't fix them, could you at least mark them better?
I'd, hey, I'd fix it tomorrow, I mean.
Yes, sir, you have a comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Just Jerry Johnson with Schaefer, Klein, and Warren. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for the authorization. Chad asked if I would be here tonight, and I said, sure, I'll be here, let's see if we can't load a whole bunch of stuff up. So, Chad was able to get pre-construction conference for Garfield restroom today, pre-construction conference for the J.C. remodel, so I'm in my second event now, which is city council meeting. I've met you in interviews, I've talked to you in meetings, this might be the first council. I just want to tell you each, thank you very much, we enjoy working, Schaefer, Klein, and Warren for the City of Mexico, enjoy working with your staff. I'm going to end with, if you get a call about a guy with a yellow safety vest downtown pacing the streets, I'm taking light meter readings for the downtown streetlight job. So, it's just about dark, I could start. Thank you again.
Any other comments? If not, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Miller?
Yes. Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Williams?